Order the June 12th, 2017 Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, will you lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance tonight, if you wish to speak during citizens' comment period, there's a sign-up sheet in the back of the room. Item two is the consideration of a consent agenda. Is our motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries five oh. Number three is call members of city council, anything they wish to present?
I have a couple things.
Yes, sir, Mr.?
I would just like to invite the citizens and public to a few things that our Rec. Department is, Precreation Department is sponsoring. The pool is now open. I would like to invite people to try out, if you haven't, the Rockin' at Ridgeview Music Series at Ridgeview Park. It's a nice event, free event. Have a nice area and it's something to do for the family. If you feel like dancing a little bit, you can. So, see, and also, I would like to invite people, probably one of the most positive feedbacks I get from the community is about the Greenway. And I would encourage, now we have Phase Two finished, I would encourage everyone who hasn't walked the Greenway to take an opportunity to walk part of it, the whole thing, whatever you want to do, at your own pace. It's really a nice thing and the sights are pretty neat right along the river and take advantage of it. Also free, of course. Okay?
Anything I'd add to that? If you go, go early before it gets hot. It is nice. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Anyone else have anything to add?
Well, to state the obvious, we've got a nice, new, beautiful bridge for, open to traffic, which...
It almost looks like it was never closed, you know?
That's right.
Right back there.
It really does, it really does set the, set the stage for all the other exciting things down at the park and then it's just a really great continuation of the main street and that sort of feel, it just feels like a completely different area down there now.
I used to tell people, you only have to go an extra block to get over to Broad Street, to get over across the river, but it seemed like you were going two miles or three miles out of your way, so, but it sure is nice and getting well-used. The people, the businesses on the other side of the river are glad it's open.
Yeah, and so are our main street businesses. I would just add, too, that we have, the conference of plan process is underway. There is a, our consultants have developed an online questionnaire and those are also available, I think, here at City Hall and then also over at the library, paper versions. But if you get a chance, planwainsborough.org. And there's a little bit of a math exercise at the end of the survey, but I think it's really helpful and beneficial and I think would, people really learn a lot about how we finance our city and more specifically, what the future might look like with different choices. And so I encourage folks to sign on and participate in that survey.
Thank you. That all? All right, item four is to receive information concerning revisions to the city's compensation and pay practice policy, benefit policy, and to receive information and approve the city's retirement benefits policy. Mr. Hamp?
I'll just call directly on Ms. Nicole Nicholson, our Director of Human Resources. And Nicole will pause after we cover, after she covers, the first two policies, which do not require action, but she'll break there and entertaining the questions that you may have before proceeding to the final policy, which will require council's approval this evening.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Allen, council members. So tonight, I'm here to talk about the revised policies for compensation benefits and the retirement benefits policies. And before we dive in, it's just, these are policies that we really do use very regularly, especially when we have new hires and things like that. And so it is important that we review these every so often and make necessary changes to make sure that we keep in step with practices and procedures, et cetera. So the first one is just for informational purposes only, so no action required. This is the compensation policy. And so the current compensation policy is in need of a revision in order to stay in step with current city compensation practices and procedures. In addition, it is prudent to refresh an organization's overall compensation philosophy every few years. So with that in mind, a revision of the current policy also includes a refreshed city compensation philosophy. So the following policy has six sections. The compensation philosophy, a section on funding, classification structure, pay ranges, pay practices, and pay procedures. In your packet, you do have copies of all the revised policies. So to start, the compensation philosophy itself is, simply put, a compensation philosophy is a formal statement documenting the city's position about employee compensation. It essentially explains the why behind employee pay and creates a framework for consistency. And so in the beginning of that policy, the two main paragraphs is really just a consolidated version of a philosophy that we've had actually in place for a while. Okay? The next section, which is funding, is basically just addressing the fact that everything in this policy is going to be dependent on the fact that there are funds available and that those funds are reviewed on an annual basis with the budget. Then we get into classification structure. So this talks about all of the, what are called job-related factors. So when we examine jobs and evaluate them, we look at them based in nine different areas to determine what that pay grade is going to be and to fit it into our structure. And so those nine areas are training and ability, experience, level of work, human relation skills, physical demands, working conditions and hazards, independence of actions, impact on end results, and supervision exercised. So every job is evaluated under those criteria and assigned a pay grade into our structure. Then we move from that into salary ranges. So that pay grade is going to determine what salary range is assigned to a job. That salary range is going to have a minimum, starting point, a midpoint, and a maximum endpoint. Okay? Then the next section, which is going to take up a couple pages, are basically a listing of all the different, the different pay practices. And so these are all the different ways that an employee's pay can be adjusted. And so you'll, you'll see in here, there's things that address starting salary, merit increases, cost of living, market adjustments, what happens with promotions, demotions when somebody transfers, when we regrade a job, when someone obtains professional or skill development, retention, internal alignment, temporary pay adjustments, and discretionary stipends, et cetera. And then the very last portion is really just some pay procedures, which really just speaks to pay dates, things around our direct deposit program, and things around payroll deductions. So that is, that is that. The next policy, which is for informational purposes only, is benefits. And so this one really needed to be revised to update benefit plans, providers, and overall benefit practices and procedures. And so there were four main changes made. On one, we had to update vendor information. The old policy just simply had vendors we didn't use anymore. We added spousal coverage in the affidavit section. We added a section on enrolling and making changes to benefits, so people had a better understanding of when and how they can make changes to their plan. And then finally, just adding clarifying language throughout the policy itself. So I will pause there, if anyone has any questions or clarification on that, before we get into the retirement benefits policy that is up for approval.
Any questions?
Is there an estimate on a savings or expenditure of some of these benefits or changes?
Well, what's in here right now is really a reflection of what we're already doing. So it's not really, this isn't really a proposal to say, hey, this is where we think we're going to go in the next couple of years. This is really just the nuts and bolts of how we administer benefits, how we enroll in benefits and stuff like that.
All right.
Okay. All right, on to the retirement benefits policy. So this policy was just another one that really needed to be updated with some things. The bones of it aren't really being adjusted. The eligibility, all of those kinds of things haven't been touched, but there were some important things that we needed to update it with. One was, we needed to add a section in there that instructed retirees to report personal data changes to human research, to HR, to make sure that their records are complete and current. The second one was adding clarifying language regarding spouse-dependent coverage, once a retiree is no longer on the health plan. There was a statement in the previous policy, it just caused a little bit of confusion. And that's just really, when the retiree themselves is no longer active on the plan, but their spouse or dependent continues, there's some implications in terms of cost sharing, and I just wanted to make that more clear. We added the spousal coverage and affidavit section, because that applies to retiree plans as well, along with, and also enrolling and making changes to benefits, because that applies too. And then lastly, just some clarifying language throughout the policy, just to shore some things up. So that concludes that. Any questions or clarification?
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Nicole. All right, is there a motion to approve the revised retirement benefit policy? Demos? Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. So any other discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it carries five oh. Thank you. Item five is to consider approving the closure of Lumos Plaza up to Wayne Theater and all the information about the Chili's and Blues Festival. Mr. Hamp?
Mr. Mayor Allen and members of council, the city has received an application from the Wainsboro Arts and Culture Initiative. It's a local nonprofit who have been conducting the Chili Brews and Blues Festival, or the Virginia Chili Blues and Brews Festival in Wainsboro for several years now. And their application requires the council to approve requested street closures, which are Lumos Plaza from Wayne Avenue to Arch Avenue, and obviously, the authorization to sale, or for the sale and consumption of beverage, alcohol, or beer on city-owned property, and then finally, the amplified sound in association with the concert. And so those are the three elements of the application that require city council's approval. I'm sorry, the event is, will be Saturday, September 23rd.
And Mr. Vice Mayor Schwartz is going to make sure we have excellent weather that day, correct?
It will not rain that day.
Not rain.
Will not rain.
If we can get around. All right, are there any questions or concerns regards to this request?
No, I'll just say that I'm, I chair the Wainsboro Arts and Culture Initiative, and so while I don't, I don't receive any compensation, as a member of the board, I will recuse myself from the application this evening.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the request, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstain.
We have four, four, and one abstain. Thank you. It carries. Item 6A is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating funds for fiscal year 2017 rollover ordinance. Mr. Hamp?
This is an administrative function that we undertake each year as we approach the conclusion of the fiscal year. As you might imagine, the city has a number of purchase orders out for the purchase of goods and services that will not be completely satisfied by the time we reach June 30th, 2017, the end of our governmental fiscal year. This ordinance appropriates the value of those outstanding purchase orders and places those funds in a reserve to satisfy the orders and services as they are invoiced in the next fiscal year.
Thank you. Any questions or concerns? Is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. This and other ordinances introduced this afternoon will be considered at the council meeting of June 26th. Item 6B is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $1,225 from the courthouse maintenance reserve to the general fund to purchase office equipment and an appliance for the court service unit. Mr. Hamp?
Under the Code of Virginia, localities are obligated to support financially the operation of court services units. They are technically a state agency, but a shared responsibility in funding their operation and the local share has to do with furniture fixtures and the like. This ordinance, as the mayor indicated, will be funded from the courthouse maintenance reserve.
Thank you. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Item 6C is to consider introducing an ordinance appropriating $1,559 from the general fund, unassigned fund balance, to the general fund for the purchase of office furniture and a robe for the juvenile domestic relations court. Mr. Hamp?
It's a very similar, if not identical circumstance to the previous ordinance. The locality is obligated, under the Code of Virginia, to support financially certain functions of the operation of the lower court system. And the one note I would make is, these funds are not from the courthouse maintenance. These expenditures are not eligible for that revenue source and they will be funded by unassigned fund balance.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Item seven is communications and correspondence. Mr. Shaw, will you have something?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff recognizes that the removal of the traffic signal at Rosser and 13th Street has been on the mind of a number of citizens and probably therefore on your minds. So this evening, we wanted to take some time to give perhaps an update on the background of the removal of the signal and then what's currently being done to consider other options in the intersection and ultimately, what we might do to come to some conclusion or decision about those options. That, as you're well aware, the city receives the lion's share of its road maintenance money through the Virginia Department of Transportation's urban maintenance program. And so annually, we have an audit that takes place conducted by VDOT. And during last year's audit, VDOT folks indicated that they felt like there were two traffic signals in the city that were going to be in need of repair, one being at the intersection of Delphine, 340 and Main Street intersection, and the second at 13th and Rosser, based primarily on the condition of equipment at those intersections. As you're aware, the city staff proposed funding in the fiscal year 18 budget to make repairs at Delphine, 340, Main Street, because we felt like that's a more priority intersection. In April, however, Public Works Department was informed by the wire company Utilities, Virginia Power, Comcast, Lumos, all have cables on the same pole that we have a spanwire signal attached to at the intersection of 13th and Rosser, and that the condition of the pole had gotten to be such that the power company was going to remove that pole and install another pole. And they demonstrated to us that the existing wooden pole is in bad enough shape that we feel like it should be removed to avoid structural failure. It's the power company's preference that we not reinstall the span line signals on their poles. So there are certainly options to put other wooden poles there, but I think, in the long run, that equipment is of such condition that it needs to be replaced and we wouldn't suggest that you put another spanwire system there. So we asked the power company to postpone their removal until after the schools are closed because of the signal's close proximity to Westwood Elementary. So the, ultimately, we came to the conclusion, based on consultation with the Public Works Department's engineers and consulting engineers at McCormick Taylor, that we should, at least in the interim, implement a two-way stop sign control, so you have stop signs on 13th and Crompton, and that we are assured that that system does meet minimum standards for safety and traffic control in that location. That having been said, we, you know, would like to continue to evaluate other options for the intersection, whether that be a form of a roundabout or another signalized intersection. So this evening, Rick DeLong with McCormick Taylor is here with us, with one of his colleagues, to briefly discuss the interim measures and then as well, to talk about what they might propose to do in the intersection, and then we can talk about how we go about coming to some conclusion on a direction forward. With that, I'll give it to you, Mr. Long.
Good evening, Mayor Allen, council members. My name's Rick DeLong with McCormick Taylor, and I also have with me William Wentz, one of our senior traffic engineers. And as Mr. Shaw noted, we, we were contacted by Public Works to take a look at the intersection. We have just a few slides. We kind of want to walk through some of the existing conditions a little bit, some of the traffic analysis that we did, and some of the short-term solutions that we looked at and worked with city staff, as well as, as Mr. Shaw noted, some, some long-term solutions that we're starting to take a look at and will continue to look at. So with that, I'm going to first turn it over to William to talk a little bit about some of the traffic analysis that we did.
Thank you very much, Mayor Allen, council members. As part of the, our project here, what we needed to do was first gather some data. So we did some traffic, we did some traffic data collection where we actually went out to the intersection and counted turning movements of vehicles and pedestrians for 12 hours on the 4th of April of this year. Once we took that data, what we needed to do is we actually needed to do a signal warrant analysis. So even though a signal's there, what we wanted to do is say, is a signal still needed at this location? Even though a signal was warranted in the past, sometimes those conditions changed. So what we did was, we looked at the warrants and yes, it still does meet warrants for signalization today. We also then took the data and we did a Synchro analysis. Synchro is a, is a micro-simulation program that we use to analyze intersections, to determine their operations and how well they function. So we looked at the existing conditions, we looked at how the signal functions today, and then we looked at some of the very short-term measures that we discussed earlier, such as the stop signs that were proposed. When we look at the operational analysis currently, for the signalized intersection, we're operating at what we call a level of service B. The level of service is an operational measurement. It's a, it's a letter grade from A through F based on the average delay that a vehicle experiences. So right now, it's, it would operate at a level of service B with the signal as it was. We looked at, in an intra-measure, should you have an intersection that's currently stop-controlled today and we say, okay, we want to signalize it and it meets warrants, what an intra-measure would be, would be to stop all the way. So we do look at an all-way stop control. As you can see, we have a level of service E here, so it doesn't function very well when we stop all movements. We then looked at a two-way stop control, where we just stopped 13th and Crompton and allowed Rosser to continue, and as you can see, it operates much better than a, than a whole-way stop control. So our recommendation for an immediate measure was to provide a two-way stop control. As you can see here, the, these are the signs that we proposed and are what are out there So that's our intra-measure. And as I said before, we're, we still warrant a signal at this location, so we need to look at what we need to do in the long term. So we could maintain this two-way, two-way stop control, but that's not really the optimal intersection operations for this right now. We could reconstruct the traffic signal. We could reconstruct it in a, what we would call a standard configuration, where we would have mast arms and poles and, and things like that. Or we could do a single diagonal mast arm. What that would be, would be a very large pole and one very large mast arm, which would basically replace the spanwire as it was before, but without the actual span itself. Or, as we talked about before, something that we would call a mini roundabout. So that would look something like this. This is not a final product, but, but just, just...
Excuse me, he's talking and we will have proper order in here, or you'll be removed from these chambers, so let him speak.
So one option would be a mini roundabout. And the, the advantage of a mini roundabout is it fits within the intersection, physical constraints as they are now. We're not looking to move right away or things like that, so it kind of fits within what we have. The city owns the cemetery on the southern portion there, so we kind of, were able to fit it in. Now, there's different options and ways we can move this around and things like that, but that's one of the ideas that we have at the moment.
Thank you, William. And so, you know, where are we at now is next steps? We've got a, I know this Wednesday, we've got a field visit where some of our engineers are going to come out and meet with some of the, the city staff to take a look at it and again, look at feasibility of, of maybe putting a pole there or the, or the right-of-way and utilities that are out there to, to take a first look at that. But one of the big steps is to, to actually get a survey, because we know we're going to need to do something out there, whether it be construct a new signal and poles or roundabouts. So we want to make sure that we get a proper survey done of the intersection, locate the right-of-way, locate utilities, locate drainage structures. And at that point, then we can look at the feasibility and the cost estimates for the various alternatives. We've already done, you know, a decent amount of the analysis, but to really look at the costs and, and the impacts to each of these alternatives, so that we can make a recommendation to city staff as to, you know, maybe the best alternative to move forward with, or at least the better of a couple of alternatives, so that a decision can be made. And that's, that's kind of our next steps. So with that, open up to any questions?
Do, do we have anything that would go in reference to cost of some of the options that you showed us? And I know it's, it's not a, a solid figure, but like a ballpark figure, so that people that are viewing us or listening to us might understand what we're going to be talking about.
You know, for the roundabout, I think it's a little early for me to speak. William, you want to speak a little bit to the, to the, I guess, the couple of alternatives you had for the signal poles?
Certainly. A mini roundabout of this size on an order of magnitude, one that was constructed in Lynchburg not that, that long ago, was running about 170, so probably about $200,000 for this. A full signalized intersection, new equipment, right-of-way, all the things that would go along with that, and we're looking at about $400,000 to $500,000.
Okay. Any other questions?
What was the operational grade of the mini roundabout?
That, that would be a level of service B.
A B?
Yes.
And is Lynchburg the closest example we have that we could see this in, in working order?
I believe, I believe so. I don't believe that, I believe it's in construction at the moment, but it is not actually functioning at this time.
It's actually, I believe it's going to construction this summer, so yeah, it's not in construction yet.
Harrisonburg might be the closest one, right?
Well, the ones in Harrisonburg are a little bit larger, roundabouts, but certainly, you're right, there's construction ones that we were involved with that are constructed in Harrisonburg. They're just probably on a little bit larger.
If you come up closer to the mic, so people at home can hear you, please.
Yeah, there are, he's correct. There are a couple that we have designed and are constructed up for the city of Harrisonburg. They're a little larger scale, so not quite the footprint that we're talking here, but generally, the operations in this are very similar.
And, and so, I think folks would understand, too, that traffic lights aren't free every day, right? So, so there's an annual cost to operate these things, and I've, I've heard from staff, order of magnitude can be anywhere from $2,000 to $4,000 annually to just to maintain in terms of the equipment and calibration of the equipment, and then, of course, the energy costs that go with maintaining the equipment. And would that be an accurate figure? Ballpark-ish? Maybe that's for Public Works?
Yeah, I'm not sure about that one.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Don't we save money over time, though, with the roundabout? Is it?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Any, any idea at all when that could be started or how long it would take to create a roundabout?
Well, I mean, it's certainly, once we, you know, once we've got the survey and we know... we know, we've got a lot of that information pulled together, you know, typically, especially if we're not impacting any right-of-way, that certainly would help the design process. But I mean, you're probably, you know, you're probably talking at least a year's worth of design, or at least nine to 12 months, depending on impacts. And then, construction typically, you know, for a roundabout this size, could easily be done in a construction season.
What about safety? So in terms of a safety analysis, number of crashes over, say, you know, the last several years at a signalized intersection, do you all have any of that data?
We do. We do have the crash data for the past five years. Pardon me while I look for it. I believe it was, let's see here, this one here. Crash history review for this location reveals five rear-end crashes, one angle crash, one head-on crash, one fixed object crash in the past five years. So five, six, seven, eight, eight crashes.
And they were all injuries?
No, not necessarily. Fixed object is not necessarily an injury crash.
And then, could you speak a little bit to the safety benefits of a roundabout compared to a traffic signal?
Absolutely. With a traditional traffic signal, you have what we call points of conflict. Every time a vehicle crosses the path of another, there's a point of conflict where a crash could occur. A roundabout cuts those number of conflict points from about 45, I believe, down to probably about 18. So basically, less opportunity for crashes.
Anything else? If we change, have we already changed the speed limit on Rossar yet?
I believe we have, yes, sir.
We have. Does that change the grading of the intersection as far as safety or operation?
No. What you'll find with a roundabout is that...
Well, not with the roundabout, but just the way it's sitting right now with the two stop signs. I know it was graded, but did that reducing the speed change the gradient?
Not necessarily, no.
Okay. I'd like to ask, maybe staff, we've heard some complaints, which I think is pretty natural anytime you change things. Is there any way, are we going to observe anything in particular, and can we change back or have a different change before we go through this time period where we make a more permanent change?
Yeah, I think we'll generally be aware and follow the performance of the interim measures. I think we would want to be thoughtful and collaborative with the gentlemen at the podium about, I'm a layperson and probably should allow a specialist speak, but I think we want to be cautious about moving back and forth between signalization and management of traffic in the intersection. Mr. Shaw, or members of...
I think anything that you would do, in other words, if you said, let's put up a temporary, some sort of temporary signal, it's still going to be very expensive, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, at least. And at some level, I would look at it and say, is, question whether that's money well spent, either in terms of safety primarily or the service in the intersection. And I would say it's probably not money well spent.
So it's probably safe to say that people need to give this a good chance, because it's going to be here for a while. What we have right now?
Yes, I would say so. And again, there are professionals that we rely upon for, you know, for guidance and advice. Anecdotally, it's a route that I take on a daily basis, and so very short sample. Obviously, it's only, the system's only been in service for a short time. But my observation would be that the intersection is certainly operating satisfactorily. Accidents are just that. There, you know, there are ways that one could predict whether something is more or less safe, but there are always human error involved in accidents. So it's difficult to say that there won't be an accident tomorrow, or there won't be an accident for the entire period that the interim measures are in place. But I think it's safe to say, no pun intended, that the measures that we have put in place are, meet minimum standards for safety. And I think we, in fact, have done a couple of things. We've put in some temporary rumble strips that are above and beyond that minimum standard. And certainly, I would invite either of you gentlemen to speak to the intersection's safety as it sits today.
Yes, that's correct. The idea is to control traffic in some fashion. So we have a choice if there needs to be a removal of the signal for a safety issue, so we have to control traffic in some way. So we have a choice currently for an immediate measure. Signs are very cheap, very quick, and very easy to install. So we can either do all-way stop control, or we stop everybody, or we can stop the side streets. And so that's operationally, stopping the side streets is better. Safety-wise, it functions about the same.
I think there had been some conversation of whether or not we would want to make a, like a no-left turn coming off of Rossar onto Crompton, or a no-left turn onto 13th Street if you were traveling south on Rossar. Are these things that would affect the grading of that intersection if those changes were made also?
Yes, it would. It would have the potential to increase the level of service, to make it better than it is. However, what you're going to be doing is then shifting that left-turn traffic somewhere else. And so, and any other intersection that they would be traveling to would then be affected as well.
But for where we stand right now, the temporary situation that we have, does this seem to be the fairest, or the safest way to run the intersection at this point, according to your company?
Yes, sir. At this point, it does.
Any other questions?
So just to recap on the span wire, so the span wire could not be relocated to the other pole. Is that what I heard?
Well, you require two poles to have a span wire. So we run a wire from one pole to another, and then pull tension between them to get the signals at the height that they need to be. The pole on the northern corner, where the controller cabinet is now, is nestled right in between where all the current power lines are. And so even to remove that is extremely difficult at this point. So the signals have come down, but the pole still remains. And actually trying to get that out is going to be very hard in and of itself. So I think it's going to stay where it is for right now. So trying to put it back would actually require the relocation of the utilities. You have to have a 10-foot clearance between the power lines and something else.
The cost just going to keep compounding, then?
Absolutely.
And are we still at the point where we are not allowed to put a wire to the new pole that's our Dominion's pole? Do we know?
That's my understanding.
It's my understanding as well.
About change their position.
Right. They have the authority over that, correct?
That's correct.
Right. Any other questions?
I'm trying to think of all the questions that we've all got.
Let's don't rush. Let's try to answer.
Yeah, I want to make sure.
Ask the questions here right now that we need to ask.
It's one thing to have an email correspondence and a phone call with somebody, but it's better to kind of do it live and for all to see.
While you're thinking, one of the things, I think, what I've been told by staff is when we look at what we're going to do with that intersection, I mean, we can kind of vote to do what we want to up here, but sometimes, being in the legal realm of things and trying to protect us on liability sides of it, we have to kind of rely upon what we're getting from the engineering departments, because if we change or go away from their recommendations, are we not opening ourselves up for liability? Mr. Patrick might want to chime in.
Definitely. If we ignore the recommendations of the professionals, that certainly increases our liability for any type of exposure out there.
I do think it's worth noting, again, for folks that have been interested, that where it comes to traffic signals, it's a very well-researched and engineered arena. And in fact, there's a manual called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices that, you know, we refer to on a very regular basis. BDOT refers to our National ASHTO as an association of traffic safety engineers. So there's, you know, obviously, as you drive across the U.S., there are thousands upon thousands of intersections, and that gives thousands and thousands of opportunities to study traffic and to develop systems of control. And then you have to apply those systems to your unique circumstance, based on the volumes of traffic and the turn movements of those traffics, you know, truck, you know, traffic, all sorts of things. We wouldn't have chosen to find ourselves in the position that we're in today. In other words, we were alerted to the condition of the traffic control devices themselves, but we thought we had time to work towards some sort of a replacement schedule. But it was actually the condition of the wooden pole that prompted us to the measures that we've had to take, and that the pole that's in place now is in such a condition that it could fail. And so I think it's worth simply noting that, one, the topic that's being discussed is one that's quite well-researched, and we feel like we have consulting engineers that we've worked with for a number of years that do work throughout the Commonwealth and beyond, specializing in this area. So I think we're getting great advice. And, two, that none of us like being where we are today. We would have much preferred that we would have engineered a solution, and that it would be, and we would have worked on it in a certainly more timely manner. But I think we were not aware that the condition of the pole was quite as bad as it is.
I'd like to say, being old and crotchety myself and impatient, I can understand probably some of the concern people may have in coming off of 13th Street and trying to turn onto Rossar, particularly a left-hand turn. It's sometimes, turning onto Rossar anymore on a left-hand turn from any intersection, sometimes is not an easy thing to do, and you're going to have to wait for traffic going in both directions. But I don't think it'll be any worse, probably with just the stop signs. These gentlemen here at the podium can probably speak to it better than I, and have surveyed it, looked at it as far as the volume of traffic. But I think, you know, once we get used to it, as I say, allowing for crotchety ness on old people's part and so forth, then I think it'll work out, you know, until we can get a permanent solution.
Thank you, Mr. Marks. Mr. Shaw?
One other point that I heard several times from folks was the, so I think, one, I think we've answered the question of why can't we just put another span wire out there on the wooden pole that Dominion's already replaced? So we've heard Dominion won't allow that. I've also heard from staff that we would need a guy wire in order to support a wire coming from that pole, their brand-new pole that they just put up, onto private property, which would require easements. So getting heads and nods of yes, okay. Second is, so let's just put a metal pole in. A metal pole takes time as well. So we heard, one, that a metal pole would cost twice that of a roundabout, which performs comparable to, if not identical, to the operations that existed prior to the signal being removed. So it's not, let's say, if we could just go out there and put a pole, we'd have to have you all design and engineer that for us, which takes time, cost, material, so on so forth, deliverables permitting, so on so forth. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we have time, and the fact that nobody likes the position that we're in, and having to respond to essentially what would account to, I think, an emergency is the only thing I can think of. You have utilities that are on a pole of which they own, that they want to remove, and when they remove it, our signals could have probably fallen down to the intersection, which probably would have generated more phone calls, right? So, yeah, I mean, I think that, I think that covers nearly all of the sort of questions that I've had in terms of, why can't we just do this? Why can't we just do that? I know one was, which is, I think, concerning for all of us. So when school gets back into session, and over the summer and into the fall, what other things could we do to make sure that it's a safe and inviting environment for families to walk their children to school? What, could we do anything else? I mean, are there enforcement things that we could do? Maybe a stronger police presence, or?
Absolutely. If it's signed for 25 miles an hour, you definitely want to make sure that it's enforced at 25 miles an hour. One of the things that we did do was, as part of the interim solution, was actually remove the crosswalks there, because they weren't actually going anywhere. And so we didn't want to introduce a negative safety to make people think that it's okay to walk there when it's actually not.
I think I would want to put that question to the chief of police and understand what resources are available, and perhaps coordinate also with school officials to understand how pedestrians and vehicles approach the school and see, you know, I don't want to apply a measure or give the impression that a measure is being applied to improve safety if it isn't really having a practical and meaningful benefit.
Sure. I mean, you all did ped counts on April the 4th.
Yes, we did.
Right. I mean, was, were there a lot of school kids out there?
No, there was minimal pedestrians out there.
Okay. So, I mean, I think that's, that context is important, too. Okay.
Do we still have a crossing guard at that intersection during school time?
I do not believe so, and it's confirmed by the chief that it's not.
I think it's just a Rossar.
Is that an option, or is that making it more dangerous by having a lit intersection? Do we know?
I don't, I couldn't speak to that. I think that's a technical question. My layperson's perspective would be that it certainly would make it safer to have supervised crossing. I think there was some question as to the actual number of individuals that were approaching the school from that area.
Because we used to have a crossing guard there.
I believe we did.
Up until last year.
Okay. And that was probably cut down because of the number of children that did not cross that street, so, okay. Any other questions that raised?
We've all tried to think of questions that we've been asked, and this question is probably for Mr. Patrick. What is the, if, after we have a public comment period, if these guys agree to stick around, if there's something that they hear that we haven't thought of, can they answer, not each person, but maybe a common theme that might come about from the citizen comment period?
Certainly. That can be assessed and incorporated into a later report. So they can convey that to you separately.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Do you have anything else under communications and correspondence?
Not this evening, sir.
Item seven is citizens' comment period.
Ms. Mary Lou Sylvia.
If you'll state your name and your address, please, Sylvia.
I'm Mary Lou Sylvia, and I live at 307 Crompton Road. And I am one of the concerned residents about this abrupt removal of this light. It's very difficult for me to understand that you just found out in April that this pole was defective, was old. I spoke to one of your public workers, and he told me that it was a matter of safety, which I understand, and that it was to be removed because it was over 50 years old. Well, I have been a resident at that address for almost 55 years, so I'm very familiar with the territory. And I understand that, and I understand safety. But do you want to wait until we have a really fatal accident? You talk about safety, and talk about your circular mini-circles, whatever the case may be. Do you mean to tell me that a 12-hour survey is going to give you a determination of data? I'm sorry, Mr. Engineer, but even in medicine, in science, in business, in architect, and management, you have more than a 12-hour study at peak hours. I've lived on Crompton Road. That is a gateway... That is a gateway from 13th Street from the main city to 250. And the worker said, "Oh, there's no pedestrian traffic." Yeah, there is. It's just that it just don't happen to have pavements on Rossar Avenue. There is on Crompton Road. We have children on Crompton Road. It still moves like a speed trap and you're 35 miles an hour on Rossar? Get real, guys. Have you driven it lately? They use it like a highway. Now that the light's not there, they're not slowing down. And as Mr. Panannis, I think that's his name, wrote a letter to the editor the other day about safety, yes, we all understand the safety issue, but with two stoplights, two stop signs, I was there this morning and it took a long time for me to make a left-hand turn from Crompton to Rossar. And I've had to renegotiate and renavigate on my way home so that I won't get into that pattern again. Another thing the worker said, "Oh, ma'am, they don't have any problem going down the Forest Drive." That never was a problem. It's a T shape, so most people would turn right at Forest. I have yet to see anybody come from the West End and make a left-hand turn in Forest Drive. It's never been a real problem. And for your information, they do have a school guard at Westwood School there. But I am a bit irate. I don't, it sounds as if it's almost going to be a done deal because it's only going to cost maybe $100,000, maybe, you know, nothing is the same amount of money that you say it's going to be and you know it yourselves. You're all business people. Other than have a light with a span because that could be $400,000. But anyway, I hope you're going to take the time and really study it and I hope the councilmen from my ward will at least give us a heads-up the next time it suddenly is abruptly removed and you have to read it in the newspaper. I think we have a right, I am a taxpayer, we all are, that you could give us the courtesy of alerting somebody in the area and not just suddenly, "Oh, by the way, the light's coming down because the pole's broken." You knew that. Maybe you didn't, but don't tell me VDOT and Lumos didn't know that that pole was old and had to be removed. It would have given you so much more time to study the situation instead of suddenly coming up with a half-acidly, if you'll pardon my vernacular, solution.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Thank you. Next. I think she said it well. Mr. Foster, you want to come up to the mic?
Yes, good.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Mr. Foster. I live at 2039 Mount Vernon Street. And I'll have to say this has eased my mind, coming and listening to these gentlemen because I've lived here a long time too and the rumor mill is a nasty thing. And I'm a man, I'm like a professor. I deal with facts. I've heard a lot of facts tonight. Now, blame can be thrown left and right. I don't care what it is. We're all trying to make things move forward and I like the way everybody's spoken. What's our best and safest way forward? The only thing that I have a concern about is the two-way stop signs. They sound good. It's a matter of people getting used to things. Look what happened on Forest Drive when we did those stop signs. Hey, go back to school again. Pay attention. It can work. But what I'd like to see happen possibly is if, when the school year starts again, if there's starting to be some problems, if there's some accidents, a temporary traffic light might be expensive, but it could be a temporary thing to get us through a rough time and then we can go back to just stop signs. Because I think everybody's open-minded, you know, we've had a short amount of time to adjust to this situation, but I think that's the only thing that I would be considering because maybe the stop signs will work only to a point. And then, you know, however many thousand it would cost to bring in those temporary, no one wants to spend money, but I don't want to see a child dead or anybody hurt either.
Exactly.
So anyway, from my point, I feel relieved. I know there'll be other people. They talked on Facebook. They didn't have the guts to come here and talk like adults, but that's their problem. But I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. All right. Is that it?
That's it, sir.
That's it. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. We are adjourned.